Good evening, everybody. I'm going to ask the remaining board members, Director Comstan. So the regular meeting of the Board of Education for September 12th, 2017 is called to order. Everyone, welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. Any item that will be voted on this evening has been posted as required by law. This meeting is televised live and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the Board website for replay times. This meeting is also being streamed live on our PPS TV services website. Interim Superintendent Awad is absent this evening and Director Rosen is out with the flu. And we all need to wish Roseanne Powell a happy birthday. There's probably better ways to spend your birthday. Happy birthday, Roseanne. As a reminder, we now have our PPS Ombudsman Judy Martin attending all regular Board meetings. Specifically Judy will be here to listen to the public comments and if appropriate, provide additional support to families who need or want it. Judy can be reached at (503) 916-3045 or ombudsman@pps.net. We also have interpreters with us this evening and I'd like to ask them, as we now have at all our Board meetings, I'd like to ask them to come forward at this time, introduce themselves in the languages they'll be interpreting and inform the audience where they'll be located in the auditorium should someone need their assistance.
Buenas tardes, me llamo Lucia, soy intérprete en español. Yo voy a estar allá si necesitan que les haga intérprete.
Salut, me llamo Tatiana. Si les va a gustar el traducción, por favor, pasen hacia esta parte. Muchas gracias.
Hey, hello, nee-ho. Mo se ngó, we're your Chinese translator. I'm going to go to the left side, red color table.
Good morning, my name is Dao, I speak Vietnamese. Xin chào, tôi tên là Đạo, tôi nói tiếng Việt. I would love to today if you need help. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Since we just had a community listening session on the middle school plan that's been under discussion, our public comment, which usually is at the beginning of the meeting, is now going to be at the latter end of the meeting. So when the new Board was sworn in on July 1st, we committed to get out into the community for our meetings and the best place to do that is to hold our meetings in schools around the city. Tonight, we're at the home of the Senators. I want to thank the staff and the Madison community for hosting the School Board meeting tonight and I'd like to introduce Madison High School Principal Patrick Allen, who's here to welcome us this evening.
Welcome to Madison, I'm happy to see you all here and very happy to see so many teachers in the house tonight. And I welcome the Madison staff here, where are you? Raise your hands up! Alright, so this is my eighth year here and this is a really amazing community. And I really encourage everyone who hasn't had a chance to come and visit us and learn more about us, to come do so at any time. We have amazing staff here that support our students. We've got a lot of advanced placement courses, dual credit options, and a real breadth of programming that a lot of people don't know about. You can learn to program a robot here. You can learn how to use a 3D printer. You can do collegiate level labs in biomedical science. There is an amazing amount of opportunity at this school and I am really very proud to be part of the community. So, and another thing that I, one of the reasons I wouldn't want to go anywhere else is because of the incredible community and diversity that we have here. I just had a woman who's on our, going to be on our accreditation team, come and meet with me today and as she saw the students just, you know, getting to class, she said, "Wow, you really have a really diverse community." And I'm not sure everybody really understands that and I consider it one of our most amazing strengths. So, get to know us better, we're happy to have you here in our halls today and I am always available to sing the praises of this amazing school. So, thanks and happy.
So, thanks again to the Madison community. Next, I want to introduce Whitney Elersick, the Assistant Director of Nutrition Services, who has a few words to say and to recognize some quiet community heroes.
Thank you so much Board for making the time and the space to hear some really positive and kind gestures that are happening out in the community, specifically within Portland Public Schools. The Nutrition Services Department is a proud supporter of the education of our students by providing a variety of nutrition programs throughout the district and throughout the school day. In the past few years, there's been some national attention around school meal accounts, specifically unpaid school lunch debt. Most of our students in the district pay for their meals based on their family's financial situation. Due to the federal rules that guide and financially support our department, we are unable to pay off these school lunch debts using federal funds. Given that our department serves over 33,000 meals a day, this can be a very difficult situation to face alone. While we had many donors over the last few months, each in their wonderful in their own right, I'm sitting here today with some honored guests, Mary Ann and Katha, who were our single most generous donors. They decided to donate their inheritance that would help the community, specifically our Portland students. They donated $10,000 to cover school lunch debt that would help many families, that's equivalent to over 3,500 meals for our students. Thank you, that means a lot. We know that their help will help families now and into the future and their interest in health for our students and our community is tremendous and it's because of them and action like theirs that families will not have to struggle as much and can allow my team to do what they do best and that's feed the kids. So we'd like to take this time to formally thank Mary Ann and Katha for their generosity and extremely kind gift here today at the Board meeting, as well as with our token of appreciation for them and to commemorate it. I'd like to present you with this award, a crystal apple on it, has the PPS logo that says "Thank you for the generous gift to support the health of students through school meals."
Well, thank you. We were very honored to be able to help people within our sorrow with our parents' deaths last year.
Thank you so much. I know that you've touched lots of students' lives in so many ways, so thank you for what you've done.
Right, and I want to put a lie to the thing that people without children don't care about Portland Public Schools.
I love this Portland community. So, yeah, that deserves another round. So on August 30th, Portland Public Schools started a new year with a new superintendent, a new Board. Three new or rebuilt schools opened on time and on budget and new funding to address critical health and safety issues. I'd like to thank the principals, school administrators, teachers, and school staff for making it a relatively smooth opening of the school year. Students are still enrolling and balancing enrollment and staff is still being monitored and adjustments being made, but I think all in all, our students had a really good start to the school year thanks to a lot of people in this room. And I also like to thank the Central Office staff who set up Coordinated Command Center with hotlines to answer school staff and parent questions on the first day of school. TV Services has a very brief video just recapping the first day of school. I see somebody running to the monitor.
We're at King's School Elementary!
Yeah, drop fast, they think, girl! First day of school!
Seeing all the faces and getting the hugs, I love those kids, they just make all of this work worth it.
Sixth grade. I can't believe you're sixth grade already.
I want to get all straight A's and do what I'm supposed to do.
We're letting kids know that we're about community here. We're about taking care of each other and building each other up and working towards a common goal, which is academic excellence for everyone.
Some kids seem sleepy and first day of school, you know, but there's a lot of kids that look really happy to be here.
How's it feel today?
Uh, overwhelming.
It's a little exciting. I want to see who's in my class and stuff, so yeah.
It's been a lot of smiles, both on the students and the adults. How's your first day been?
Awesome!
Thank you. So, just on the last note of the enrollment and student balancing, the forecasting, in the next couple of meetings, we'll probably have a report from Enrollment and Transfer on students in our classrooms and sort of what that means for the staffing of our schools just for the rest of the year. Our next agenda item, I'd like to ask Director Sparza Brown to lead the section of the meeting regarding a resolution of the Board of Education related to the Deferred Action for Child Arrivals.
Thank you. I think building on what was said in the video of caring for our community and building each other up, we are proposing, is this not on? Okay, thank you. So we're to continue on what was said in the video that in caring for each other as a community and building each other to up. Tonight, we're, have a proposal for DACA related to the President's recent actions. So in response to the President's decision last week to rescind the Deferred Action for Childhood Arrivals program known as DACA, tonight, we are proposing Resolution 5509, or Resolution in Support of DACA's Dreamers, because we know that many of our students, some of our staff and community members, will be impacted by this action. Yet, it's incumbent upon our entire community to support our dreamers, who, many of whom were brought here as young children, leaving behind a birthland with which now they have little connection. And in fact, many of the dreamers no longer speak the language of their birth country. This resolution affirms the Board and District's support of our dreamers and is consistent with laws that entitle all children in our country to a free public education, no matter their immigration status. So Resolution 5509 is also consistent with our immigration resolution that we passed in November 2016, affirming our resolve to keep our schools as safe zones for children, staff, and families. And this means that no immigration official may enter the schools before contacting the Superintendent and our legal counsel. Tonight's resolution reminds us to treat all of our children fairly and in equitable manner regardless of their status and that we ask our legislators to create a path for our dreamers to remain in this land that they call home. Portland Public Schools believes in all of our students, they believe, we believe in our community. And we know that the 800 dreamers that live in our country are paying taxes and they are sharing with their talents and their dreams and so we offer this resolution tonight.
I want to thank Director Sparza Brown. So the Board will now consider Resolution 5509, Resolution in Support of DACA's Dreamers. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Director Sparza Brown moves and Director Bailey seconds the motion to adopt Resolution 5509. Ms. Houston is, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Powell, the birthday girl. Is there any public comment on Resolution 5509?
There is not.
Any Board discussion on this resolution?
I'm in complete support for this resolution, but I also feel, as a student, what I've seen is that there needs to be more resources for immigrant students, especially with, that now DACA has been taken away. I know my best friend who's under DACA doesn't even know if she can apply for FASPA and these resources that she just doesn't know that are available for her. People tell her like, "Oh, just look it up, look up scholarships that don't need citizenship." But it's really not that easy and she's really lost in where she needs to find resources to get to college. And I think we need to focus on providing those resources because I know right now it's really scary for her because she doesn't know what she's going to do after high school and, you know, right now's the time to start applying for scholarships in colleges and she doesn't know where to start.
Thank you, Moses, if I can speak. There are many great groups that have wonderful resources, so we can put resources from, you know, we can gather all the ones that we know about on the website. Also, I would refer us to, you know, our culturally specific community partners like Latino Network and ERCO that also have resources for our students and our families and our staff.
Thank you.
Any other Board discussion or comment? Director Sparza Brown, do you want to close?
Yeah, again, on a personal note, it was a really hard week. I have, you know, focused on children that we've historically underserved, both with, because of ability differences and language differences and color differences. But this resolution and the fact that we have this discussion in our community leaves me with hope. And again, as I look at all of the teachers, I know that you care about children. So if we band together and we really work with our legislators to create this path that our children need, the future will, their future will benefit all of us.
Thank you, Director Sparza Brown, for your leadership on this. The Board will now vote on Resolution 5509. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? Resolution 5509 is approved of a vote by six to zero with Student Representative Moses Tran voting.
Yes.
The resolution passes. And I'd ask if our Legislative Affairs Representative Courtney Westling can communicate the, send the resolution to our congressional delegation on behalf of the Board. Thank you. So next, we've had a request from the Portland Association of Teachers President Suzanne Cohen to address the Board, so I'd like to ask President Cohen to come forward.
Thank you. Students, parents, teachers, and community members have come together tonight to voice concerns about the start of the school year. And I have to say that I'm concerned about public comment being moved to later in the evening because the same reason that I came and signed up to use this time is knowledge that you had. So it was using social media that met in different groups that many of you are part of, that the conversation started from a kindergarten teacher who was concerned about her students' learning environments. And very quickly, parents started chiming in and wondering what could they do about this class size. And so from then, it grew on social media and it started with a kindergarten teacher saying 28 students is too many. And quickly, we heard from the first grade teachers that 30 was too many. And it went on where middle school teachers were talking about 180 is too many. So educators are really concerned about learning environments and we're concerned about our workload. So I'm not sure if other people will be addressing you later this evening during public comment or a next Board meeting, but I do want to acknowledge that this came about from parents and teachers that were concerned. And are there any people here that are concerned about class size or caseloads? So before I start expressing the concerns that I've heard, and I actually asked people to give more input for tonight since I had the opportunity to speak, I want to make sure that you're ready to listen. So there might be some thoughts going on in your head right now about when you were a student, your class size, or maybe your own child's class size, or maybe you're thinking about the budget right now. And all of these things are barriers to really hearing the impact of the decisions and I'm asking you to kind of calm those thoughts for a second and really listen not only to what I'm saying tonight, but when educators come before you in the future to speak and parents about our students' learning conditions and hear them out on it. And I also want to be clear that this is not a concern over the District's ability or inability to implement a policy, this is concern over the policy. We have concerns that a kindergarten class size is set to be acceptable at 28. That's not okay. And so in that back-to-school video, yes, there were students smiling. And let's be really, really clear about why they're smiling. They're not smiling because they got a visit from the Superintendent-to-be or the Board Chair. They are smiling because they are excited to be back in school with the educators who see them every day. And your job as District Leaders is to make sure those educators can smile back. So let's start with kindergarten. This is one story, but I felt like it resonated with a bunch of the stories that we're hearing from kindergarten. So school starts and there's a student with some pretty extreme needs. They're biting, they're kicking, they're throwing things off the shelf, punching other students. So the kindergarten teacher is seeking assistance and one of the first things she's told is, "We don't do one-on-one paras." I'm not actually sure if that even is a District policy or not because we just read something in the paper about how some students do get one-on-one paras. But either way, what you're doing is damaging the learning conditions and increasing workload. So either there's bureaucracy and hoops to climb and you have to know the system to actually access these resources, which is an unfair system, or if you believe that, "Oh, okay, we don't do it." And so this is what's normal and what's right for my classroom. And then she confided that last year she had a class size of 18 and one student with high needs and she felt she was, you know, it was difficult, but she was maybe able to do something about it. She told me that this student was only the most extreme, she had four others with pretty high needs, and that now her class size is 28. And she broke down and she wondered how she was going to make it through the year. This also leads to Special Education Services for our most vulnerable students and I would also say one of our most overworked staff group. So there's vacancies all over the district and it's no surprise why these positions are hard to fill. So early reports are showing high schools with caseloads over 40 students. And then with the move to inclusion without support resources, common planning time, any of the things that could actually help this be successful. These moves to new programs without the supports and resources is echoed through other departments. So our services for English language learners, specifically third through fifth grade, has changed. It's changed before any of the services or supports are in place, before anyone knows how to do it, and before any common planning time has been built in, which results in an overworked general education teacher, an overworked English language teacher, and the end result is those students are not getting their needs met. And so I do want to read you one quote from an English language teacher who actually, the question was started posing like, "What is the ratio for us?" And they're wondering, "Is it 50 to 1?" And so here's the story. "Last year, we started with 58 students and we had one and a half educators. This year, I'm close to 50 and it's just me. I have three newcomers and no newcomer classes because I'm spread very thin." And then this gets echoed for our counselors. So that was a position we worked hard to rebuild, then it got cut, and then we chose to invest money to restore those positions. And our counselors, one has been told, "Counselors have flexible lunches, so they need to cover all midday duty needs." Which leaves this counselor wondering, "When do I do my Gay-Straight Alliance Club? What about middle school leadership? What about my suicide prevention team?" In middle school, I was privy to an email exchange where we had two educators who had four preps and 180 students. And they were trying to, in addition to all that work, manage the schedule and offer things like, "Maybe if I didn't teach this one elective and I only had three preps, maybe then I can squeeze my body in between the chairs of my overcrowded classrooms and try to give my students the attention they need." At a time where we're unable to provide students with the wraparound services and the mental health supports and the community interests that we have, our students shouldn't have to compete with each other for some one minute of individual attention from their educator. I'm really glad that you're getting to celebrate the first day of school. We love our students, we are so happy to be with them and see them. But in your tour, did you meet the fourth grade teacher who the day before school was told, "Oh, the numbers, you're going to teach a four-five blend and by the way, that's unsupported, you've got two curriculums and no supports and no time to make this work." We need work relief now. You are hearing from me tonight, but there will be others and we are fighting for the schools our students deserve. Thank you for your time.
So we've already had a fair amount of comment this evening on the middle school plan. And in addition, last week, the Board's Enrollment and Forecasting Committee was presented with the formal proposal. Director Bailey, who's the chair, is also joined on that committee by Directors Anthony and Directors Moore. And I'm going to ask Director Bailey to once again lead a portion of the meeting related to the middle school plan and also to introduce Laura Parker, the Chief Strategy Officer, who spent a lot of time putting this, building this plan with the community.
Dr. Parker, come on up. Are we here again? Is the mic working?
Yes.
The mic is working?
Yes.
Okay, thanks, doesn't sound that way. No? There we go. Okay. as they have worked through such proposals in previous iterations. And we wanted to make sure that we focused on data points, sometimes called KPIs, that encouraged and aligned to the core values of the proposal. And so we made sure to highlight those pieces as well. So I'll give a very brief overview and then we can entertain questions and maybe I'll catch you up on your time. All right. So I think it's very important to recognize that in opening Harriet Tubman and Roseway Heights Middle Schools in the 2018-19 school year, we will immediately open access to world-class middle school programming for 1,200 sixth through eighth grade students in the first year. 1,200. So it's not just two schools, it's 1,200 sixth through eighth grade students in the 18-19 school year. And at that same time, we'll also reconfigure eight K8 schools into K5s so that approximately 3,400 students are immediately in the pipeline to access that world-class middle school education and are being served by world-class elementary programming in their resulting K5s, allowing those staff and administrators in those buildings to really focus on a strong elementary education aligned to many of our strategic areas such as our elementary literacy work. I think it's important to recognize that the outcomes include an access to a comprehensive program that is integrated, challenging, and exploratory that will prepare students for the rigors of high school and beyond. I know that tomorrow evening, the teaching and learning committee will hear a presentation around the research-based middle grades framework, instructional framework that has been put together over the last 15 months by PPS educators. And I think you'll be excited to see, you know, what that culminates in and how that delivers such a rigorous experience for our students. Opening these two schools will also provide clear articulation to middle schools for three dual-language immersion programs. Our Mandarin DLI program at Martin Luther King Jr., a Spanish DLI program at Scott, and a Vietnamese dual-language program at Rose City Park. These programs currently serve just under 400 students currently today, and they will grow every year as they move towards the middle grade levels. The proposal also will yield a single high school feeder pattern for families in the new catchment areas so that there's stability and clarity as the cohorts move together through high school. It will also relieve the facilities overcrowding that currently impacts Lee and Scott as K8s and Beverly Cleary on its three-campus arrangement. It will also yield resulting K5s with balanced enrollment in seven of the eight feeders. Seven is good, eight would be better. And it's clear and we know that we need to keep working on how to wrap our arms around Vestal and ensure a strong neighborhood catchment with a strong capture rate yielding a robust student population with maximum funding. It's clear the work isn't done there. So these are some of the high-level expected outcomes of this effort. Spending a little bit of time talking about Tubman and then a little bit of time talking about Roseway Heights. For the Harriet Tubman Middle School, the proposed feeder schools are Boyce Elliott-Humble, Irvington, Martin Luther King Jr., and Saban. It will feed the pre-arranged dual assignment high school zone of Grant and Jefferson. By opening Harriet Tubman Middle School, we will bring an appropriately-sized middle school back to the Albina neighborhood, meaning that we've ensured a strong enough student population to meet all of the demands for providing that integrated exploratory program. And we've also allowed space for transfers for children who have historic relationships to the Albina community. Harriet Tubman will consolidate two of three middle school IB programs currently located in our K8 schools. Those programs are full school programs at Saban and MLK Jr. And you'll see in the movement for the localization of the middle school framework in Tubman, you'll see the design of what International Baccalaureate looks like in the middle years, what philosophy is presented, what the student experience is instructionally. It will create a consistent high school feeder pattern for all Tubman neighborhood students. It will provide a home for the sixth through eighth Chinese DLI program coming from MLK Jr. That won't start until 2019 because the program adds each year, so it won't be in the first year. It will come in the next year. We would expect about 24 students in the very first year. And it will create a racially and socially-economically diverse educational setting. This was intentional in many of our proposals as we looked to figure out how to preserve and strengthen diversity within our school settings, a value that all of our school communities hold. The proposal does include some boundary changes. And it's important to understand why our boundary change is proposed. And there are a couple of primary reasons. One is to address persistent under-enrollment of feeder schools that may leave resulting K5 schools at risk of not having equitable staffing and programming. And the proposal includes the chart up here that indicates the historic under-enrollment of the K8 schools feeding into this catchment. So you can see in all of those situations, most notably at Martin Luther King Jr. and Irvington, that they have struggled with meeting the enrollment demands needed to have the funding and staffing that support desired programming. So the proposal introduces boundary changes that would specifically help to balance enrollment at MLK Jr. and Irvington, noting that historic pattern above. Just to orient you a bit, throughout the proposal, we indicate the current boundaries of each of the schools as the black outline and the proposed boundary as the blue-shaded area. So for Irvington, if Irvington were to convert from a K8 to a K5, it would likely have a little over 300 students. That's too small for our desired minimum enrollment of 360 for a K5. So we'd like to bolster the enrollment there. We have an opportunity to bolster the enrollment at Irvington while simultaneously relieving One of the issues that we've proposed a boundary change between Irvington and Beverly Cleary, one of the issues that, or questions that was discussed in the enrollment forecasting committee is the actual year-by-year and grade-by-grade implementation. Because for those who've been watching closely, most boundary changes begin with the new incoming kindergarten students. And so current students are grandfathered, as the term is often used per board policy, into staying in the school that they're currently assigned until they reach the highest grade. So we wanted to provide a little bit of context as to what some of the realities would be for some of the proposed boundary changes. So I'm going to provide some of those numbers. I'll come back to Beverly Cleary in a minute. For MLK Jr., Saban, and Alameda, I hope this depiction does it justice. This is person feedback that folks gave us in the community engagement sessions. There's a proposed boundary change to again strengthen that enrollment at MLK Jr., remembering how historically under-enrolled it is. A proposed boundary change between Saban and MLK Jr. and the green arrow indicates the portion of Saban's current catchment that would move to Martin Luther King Jr. That would then leave Saban a bit too small to offer the type of robust programming that we want to be able to offer. So there's also a proposed boundary change to balance Saban by moving a portion of Alameda's current catchment into Saban. What this would mean is in the first year, grandfathering clauses would assume again per board policy be included here. In the first year, the new incoming kindergarten students from the portion moving to Saban to MLK Jr. would be forecasted at 19 students. From Alameda to Saban, that is forecasted at 10 students. So 10 incoming kindergarteners currently in Alameda are forecasted to then be in Saban. 19 currently in the Saban catchment are forecasted to be in King. Does that make sense? So those are the types of detailed planning that we look at to really figure out what's possible, given the constraints obviously of our facilities and making sure that the sizes that we're introducing are manageable, especially when you have a situation where you want to honor the board policy letting students stay in their schools as boundary changes are invoked. So in many situations, we see some of our schools growing for a couple of years until those cohorts graduate before settling back down. All right. So for the Tubman catchment, the boundary change, now having said all that, I'm going to reverse myself immediately, the boundary change for MLK Jr. and Saban is proposed to begin with incoming kindergarten students only in 2018-19. The boundary change between Saban and Alameda, so Alameda portion, the forecasted 10 students going to Saban, would begin with incoming kindergarten students only in 2018-19. However, for Irvington and Beverly Cleary, due to the facility constraints at Beverly Cleary, the proposal does propose that boundary changes would be implemented immediately for incoming K5 students due to the space constraints. So all students that are in that catchment zone of the new proposed boundary between Irvington and Beverly Cleary, all incoming K5 students that are in that zone would go to Irvington unless they have a sixth through eighth grade sibling remaining at Beverly Cleary. And I imagine there'll be questions on that, so we can come back to it. I don't know why I keep pointing this thing a little bit. Okay, there we go. And that would be about 95 students, since I shared the numbers earlier. That would be about 95 students in that zone between Beverly Cleary and Irvington. All right. I can move on to Roseway Heights. All right. So for Roseway Heights, the proposed feeder schools are Rose City Park, Lee, Scott, and Vestal, with a proposed single feeder pattern high school to Madison. Opening Roseway Heights Middle School would bring an appropriately-sized middle school to the Madison High School cluster. We're actually expecting about 700 students in Roseway Heights. Be a wonderfully robust building. Provide a home for the sixth through eighth grade Spanish dual-language immersion program coming from Scott, and that would begin in 2018. The Vietnamese dual-language immersion program that is proposed to be housed at Rose City Park would matriculate up to Roseway Heights in 2020. It would create a diverse educational setting, again honoring that core value for many of our school communities. It would also provide relief to several overcrowded schools in the region, Beverly Cleary, Lee, and Scott. And it would create again that consistent feeder pattern. Now by opening Rose City Park as a neighborhood school that doesn't currently operate as a neighborhood school, there are two grades of Beverly Cleary currently housed at Rose City Park. So in this proposal, we would want to shrink Beverly Cleary enough in order to be able to fit on the two campuses of Hollyrood and Fernwood. It's part of why we're asking for the board exemption to institute the boundary change immediately. Rose City Park also houses the access program. And this proposal proposes relocating the access program in its current configuration of grades 1 through 8 to the Humboldt facility, which is the facility that has enough classrooms and availability. The current tenant at Humboldt is a leased agreement with the Kairos PDX Charter School. And we would not be renewing that lease once it's up at the end of this year. And that would allow us to open Rose City Park, which would then allow us to open up Roseway Heights. I can get to those details. All right. In this proposal, the incoming K5 cohort from Roseway Heights would move as a family with the Vietnamese dual-language immersion program to Rose City Park. And then we would begin a series of boundary changes, and that's what I'll talk about now. So again, to address under enrollment of feeder schools that leave our K5s at risk of not having the staffing and programming that they need, we're proposing boundary changes within the Roseway Heights catchment. It's important to note, as you look at this data, that Scott also has a co-located Spanish DLI program. All right. See if you can follow this one. So in order to strengthen Scott, again, to serve both its neighborhood K5 program and its co-located program, we'd actually propose a boundary change between Scott and Alameda and Rose City Park. So here's how it works. There's a small portion of Alameda, I believe it's north of Stanton, when you look at this in great detail, that would move to Scott, again, starting with incoming kindergarten students. That would be forecasted to be eight students moving from the zoned Alameda to Scott in South of Stanton, along that corridor, and I believe this is the historic boundary. This used to be the boundary between Alameda and Rose City Park, 52nd, I believe. So south of Stanton, a small portion of that area from Alameda would move to Rose City Park. And that number is forecasted to be three incoming kindergarten students in the first year, and then of course it grows. And there's a portion of Rose City Park, I might not have drawn the arrow there, that moves to Scott, and that would forecast about seven new kindergarteners moving from in great detail, that would move to Scott, again, starting with incoming kindergarten students. That would be forecasted to be eight students, moving from the zoned Alameda to Scott in South of Stanton, along that corridor, and I believe this is the historic boundary, this used to be the boundary between Alameda and Rose City Park, Fifty Second, I believe. So south of Stanton, a small portion of that area from Alameda would move to Rose City Park, and that number is forecasted to be three incoming kindergarten students in the first year, and then, of course, it grows. And there's a portion of Rose City Park, I might not have drawn the arrow there, that moves to Scott, and that would forecast about seven new kindergarteners moving from what would have been Rose City Park to Scott. Rose City Park and Lee, so this is a little bit where you're talking about the boundaries with Rose City Park, I mean, you have to remember that currently it doesn't exist. So we're talking about what was the Roseway Heights boundary, that cohort, again, moving together to Rose City Park. And immediately in the first year, there's Seventy Second Drive, which I think is right through the golf course, that would become the new boundary line between Rose City Park and Lee. And so we would draw that boundary there to balance Lee, make it stronger in terms of enrollment. There's also a very small portion of Lee, if you look, what do people, what do people refer to it? There's a small portion of Lee right along eighty-four that would actually be rezoned to Rose City Park. It makes that area much more walkable for those students, and we would forecast four incoming kindergarten students would, that are currently zoned in that area, for Lee would then be at Rose City Park. What we would propose in terms of implementation is that the implementation of the new boundaries would begin, again, with incoming kindergarten students only in 2018-19. And so that would include the boundary I just showed you between Rose City Park and Lee, a small change between, from Alameda to Scott and Rose City Park, again, beginning in the 2018-19 school year. And we have an exception there of the change proposed between Rose City Park and Beverly Cleary would be immediately implemented for incoming K-5 students again, and that would be at about one hundred and thirty-two students. So those are very high level. Currently, in terms of engagement and listening sessions, obviously, we had this listening session tonight. Thank you again for hosting that. There've been a series of informal sessions with parent groups that impacted schools, and our communications department is consistently scheduling additional school-based sessions. Some of us for PTAs are back-to-school nights. They're working through that in kind of a daily rate. Their details at our pps.net/middleschools website. There are planned community engagement sessions for both Roseway Heights and Tubman as complete catchments, the last week of September. I know the Roseway Heights one is scheduled. I think we're still working out the date for Tubman. There've been a series of conversations that are ongoing with key community leaders and internal stakeholders. And again, the community engagement activities are on the website, and I know the SIPA team can speak to any specific questions you might have. I also know that the enrollment of forecasting committee will be meeting again on the eighteenth? Scott, I think? All right, we're still with that. All right, to continuously hear and work through some of the details around the proposal so that we can continue to make it stronger where we can. So those are my overall updates. I can certainly revisit specific details if there are questions or figure out a way to get some of those specific data points that you might have interest in to you.
We're ready for questions.
So I have a question regarding the high school assignment of middle-grade students at Beverly Cleary, and when those changes would take place.
Great. So the information that we did provide on high schools is on page forty-two, the very end. But for Beverly Cleary, current eighth-grade students that are in Beverly Cleary right now, if they, if their families are part of the boundary change that would move them to Madison, they would actually still stay at Grant for the current eighth grade. And then the proposal is that any cohort after that would then move on to Madison. That's how it is currently presented.
I just want to point out that with the West Side boundary changes, we, the decision was to grandfather all of those middle school students, so sixth, seventh, and eighth graders at West Sylvan when those boundary changes were made. So I'm not advocating one way or another, I'm just saying we should be aware and thinking in terms of consistency in policy.
If we could get numbers on, number of students affected, that would be great.
Yep, absolutely. So to make sure that we indicate sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade students that are going to be staying in Beverly Cleary.
Who have a high school assignment change.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Rita, do you have a question?
This is, this is like the fourth time I've seen this, so I've already asked a lot of my questions, but I think we still have lingering issues for some of these things. And I think the big ones that were called out during the listening session were Rose City Park being at hundred percent utilization the day the doors opened. And conversely, Vestal being pretty significantly under-enrolled. I'm hoping we can find a way to, so I, okay, I'm geographically challenged, but I think the boundary, I think they share a boundary, and it's eighty-four, is that right?
Yeah, so the currently, the proposal is the northernmost boundary being eighty-four, about the eastern part of that is with Lee, the western part is with Rose City Park, and it sort of hooks around west, and then there's sort of, I think it's Glenco is also in that corner.
So, I mean, eighty-four is a significant barrier. But I'm hoping we can look at that as, to see if we can find some way to relieve both Rose City Park and Vestal and kind of respond. And, you know, I don't have any answers here, I'm just, I'm just saying.
So I think for our next committee session, a helpful dataset would be that implementation plan with Rose City Park to show the modeling of what that looks like in year one, two, and three with two assumptions. One, the grandfathering before students move on to Lee, because that could be something we looked at, and folks have already brought that, brought that up. And two, make sure that there's clarity in the modeling of the Vietnamese dual-language immersion program and how that grows, so you just see how that grows. So we'll bring that forth one day.
Yeah, so I guess, I think for me, the big one is Vestal, because that's, that's going to happen almost immediately. It's already under-enrolled, and this is just, just going to exacerbate it. So.
Agreed.
Yeah.
You know? The other concern I've heard is moving the special ed classroom to Vernon. And I want to make sure, I think we're going to want to hear from the special ed program how that's going to work. And I have heard Vernon families concerned about overcrowding, if that happens. I mean, I'm, I'm concerned about Vernon staying at K-8. All that being said, I just want to say publicly, I appreciate all the work you've done on this, and you.
It's a collective effort, thank you.
Yeah, but I mean, you know, you guys stepped into it, kind of well into it, and, and I think this is a, this is a really solid plan, so thank you.
I would agree, you've put us in the position of really working around the edges, and the meat is pretty solid. I think one issue that I think we need to address is access and a little bit of inconsistent direction on the district's part, which is, we did move forward from the Teaching and Learning Committee that a recommendation that access be grades three through eight. It was not, that was not formally adopted by the board, but that that would be recommended as a best practice based on when the district-sponsored testing occurs of students. Also, a lot of reasons, but it fits with our equity policy in terms of making sure that all students across our district are tested to see if that's the right program for them. We, I mean, there are no great solutions there, because we are, we don't have a lot of empty facilities where, and right-sized facilities where we could locate that program. But there is one option that I would like to encourage looking at again, which would be co-locating in Jefferson High School, which is something that had come up years ago. It's a large facility. I know, especially in the early years of the middle-college program, there was a real hesitancy to, you know, put anything else there now that, you know, that program is more firmly established. I mean, I just think it's incumbent upon us to see if there are any other programs that might be able to find a home there and maybe access.
Great, great. So thank you for that clarification, and I believe our interim assistant superintendent of Teaching and Learning might reach out to you regarding just that clarification of how we work with that recommendation. So I appreciate to move forward, what needs to be moved forward, because currently, you know, we're planning on moving the configured, the grade configuration inclusive of first and second grade, and so I'm hearing a potential amendment to that, and thank you for exploring the solution with co-location.
Along those lines, I think we also need clarity to the district's policies and, I guess, support of, you know, under the Tubman certainly plan here, we talk about, we're working with the director, Moore and myself currently are working with the community on a right-to-return policy for students that have historic roots in the Tubman area. So as we consider Humboldt and that space, if it isn't the right size for access, then perhaps allowing Kairos, which is part of that community and children that have been underserved in the past, to remain in that building. So I want to explore some options. Are there ways to coexist with, not necessarily co-locate, but coexist with being able to maintain Humboldt as they are and allow access to grow as well?
I'm just going to sort of piggyback on that, because I think a lot of this, the basis of the work is good. I think that for me, some of the most, some of the problematic pieces is Rose City Park. So I'd be interested in Jerry Vincent's view of the facilities. When I was on the board before, Rose City Park was closed because of the condition of the facility, and frankly, it only got reopened because of the Marysville fire, and they needed to be able to relocate the Marysville to another school within five days, and the school that was open and available was Rose City Parks. And I don't think there's been substantial improvements made since then, but it was a really, it's a beautiful building, but it was not a very safe place for kids. So I think before we sort of bank on it being sort of this anchor school, whether it's a neighborhood school or for access, that we look at that. Do you want to speak to that?
No.
Okay, okay. And then just conversely, I would like to sort of draft off of some of the, just the thinking, a little bit out-of-the-box thinking that maybe Director Constam had better outbound Kairos. So when I was on the board in the early 2000s, it was right after Humboldt and Jefferson High School had both reconstituted, so the only two schools in Portland School District that served predominantly African-American students that were re, all the staff were fired or moved. And so that community has been through a lot, and I can sympathize with families who live nearby and can't send their kids to their historic neighborhood school. So something, so I'm interested in what can be done there that doesn't displace a community yet again. And let's see, the other thing, I guess I just will just raise, and it's been referenced already, but just the, if, if we don't solve, or we don't address Vernon and Vestal, the issues now, are we just going to be, in two years, going to be changing boundaries again? And that, you know, I think sometimes changes have to be made. I went to a consolidated high school here in Portland, but doing it over and over again is destabilizing, I think, the school community, so the more that we can minimize multiple shifts. So I'm sure the committee can be thinking of some things. So they're just some concerns I have, and I would at some point want to hear from Jerry Vincent on the soundness of Rose City Park.
I just want to call out some things that also need to intersect with this, that are not necessarily boundary-related or even facility-related. Well, some of them are facility-related. We need to get some real clarity around focus option programs and their location and what the plan is. I think it's especially critical for DLI programs, and we're making some assumptions about co-location and where DLI programs are going to feed to for the foreseeable future. And I think we need to get some real clarity on that, because I'm not, I am not a fan of co-location. I think it's been demonstrated over and over and over again that it, it's really difficult to manage. And, yeah, so I worry about replicating that and even continuing co-location in areas that are, that are already experiencing difficulties. So, so I would, you know, you're, you're doing the boundary and feeders and all that stuff. We also need a bunch of things coming out of the academic side of the house. And so I'm hoping that we can, sooner rather than later, get some real solid information about plans, you know, like what are we doing? And what do we plan to do in the foreseeable future? So just wanted to call that out.
Sure.
So thank you whoever sent the focus option report. That's a start. Um, that's a start, and that will be helpful. But certainly, I mean, I thi- think the discussion, to continue the discussion, which I think last year had been, um, been brought up about potential for, um, DLI schools. Um, and, and I don't know where that went, it seemed like it, then it just, the conversation stopped. I'm not sure where that decision was made or where we're at on it, but I still think that that's worthy of investigating. Um, yeah, so, let's continue to gather information on that.
Um, I wanted to add to Rita's point about the focus option work and how critical it is because when we look at, like, the conundrum with access and Kairos that is before us right now with this work, um, when the, the options were evaluated for access, um, it didn't include a broad survey of all the facilities that have focus option programs in them. It just included the facilities that were available or that we knew were soon to be available. And so, um, we really need to cast a broader net to see, um, if there, if there are any alternatives other than Humboldt, because to echo Julie's comments, I mean, I think it is a very compelling call from the community to, um, to face our, um, interest in having a right-of-return policy for Tubman and potentially Jefferson, while at the same time, um, potentially uprooting a successful program um, that is serving African-American students in that community. Uh, even though it is a charter program, um, you could certainly say that, uh, it be, it was born because of our, um, uh, the district's inability to serve those students well. So, we are part of that whole cycle and those are our kids, so.
So, um, can I ask a couple, or just a point of clarification on, um, the, the needed board process so that we make sure that we meet these needs and deliver this kind of information? Um, I do know that our Interim Assistant Superintendent, um, has just, you know, put together, um, kind of the last several years of DLI plans and, and, and growth. Um, and I think is looking for an opportunity to make sure that that gets shared since much of it has been through intersections with the board, um, and the Teaching and Learning Committees, um, over the years. So that's one piece.
Good evening, board members. Um, my name is Dr. Chong, Interim Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning. And throughout this process, we really look at the academic side and which program to offer middle school and what does it make a, a solid, successful, uh, program for our students. At the same time, with the boundary changes, we also look at, uh, DLI, uh, feeder patterns. So, our team has put together two presentation, and we presented two direct reports this morning so that with new board members, I'm sorry, with new, uh, direct report members, we want to make sure that all of us on the same page. So we already have those presentations ready, uh, and we also, uh, would like to have some time to present it to the board members as well. So, we have that, uh, but the district plan, I'm sorry.
Will that be for Teaching and Learning tomorrow or what? That's our point of clarification.
Yeah, that's our point of clarification because we have an agenda set already for tomorrow, and that is not part of it, but I had our team put it together so that in case there are questions and in case there are, um, lingering what, what happened, then we can share it out. So that's, but we have whole agenda tomorrow, uh, I was set, preset.
Right, but if it sounds like it might be part of helping to, um, look at the bigger picture of middle schools, I'm, I'm thinking it would be better to look at, see that sooner than later.
Yes, we can do that, and then we can drop one, one agenda item, uh, from the, uh, for tomorrow. Maybe the instructional framework, we can drop that off, um, and to the next meeting, K twelve.
Yeah, K twelve framework, not the middle school framework.
Yeah, not the middle school framework, the K twelve framework, instructional framework, because that was on the agenda, uh, one of the agenda items.
So, in particular, what's, uh, could you bring us up to speed on Bridger? Because they have, um, a strand that's growing, and from what I understand, they don't have room enough currently to accommodate the full growth of that strand?
I don't have the Bridger details in front of me, so, can we bring that forward with the right agenda? I just don't have it in front of me.
Yes, we can discuss that tomorrow because I think it's, it's part of the presentation for tomorrow and.
Thank you.
So, since people are just adding issues, since people are adding issues. So, DLI, yes is a concern, but, uh, also, I, just if you move into, um, southeast, um, there are very few neighborhood schools between the River and Eighty Second. Um, they're, it's full of focus option schools, um, whether it's, I mean, you can just go down the list, but from the River to Eighty Second and, um, Gleason to Division, it's, um, there's very, very few, it's one of the few parts of the, the, um, city where it's, there's focus options, programs all over the place, which, they're not the same problems as DLI, but they do create some of the same dynamics within a, within a school community. So, I would just, i- if we're gonna look at DLI, there's, uh, some nuances that we should look at with some other schools as well.
Yeah.
And I think this is part of the Ed Options Committee conversation because, um, exactly what, uh, Dr. Director Bremet was just saying, there's a lot of, uh, neighborhood students who are pull-up from, uh, neighborhood schools to go to option schools as well, but that's a need.
So, I, I'd like some clarification about whether changing, uh, a lottery practice, if that's, takes board action or can just be administrative action? I'm, I'm.
Judy's still here.
I'm sure it can be administrative action, although the board can always overrule administrative actions, so sometimes it's, um,
Here comes Judy.
desired to have, um, board support for something.
Yeah.
Especially if it's a, it's a policy that's driving the, the, the change.
Yeah, I'm not sure if it's policy, if it's practice, uh, that a board resolution could urge along.
Judy, do you want to weigh in?
I'm talking about the focus option, uh, putting some kind of cap on, uh, how many kids from a neighborhood school can, that have focus options.
Um, there are.
There's a chair right there.
So, uh, mostly, but if I don't sit, I won't stay long. Um, most, uh, most of the actions that are in the lottery are governed by board policy. Certainly a board through resolution could say, we, we want the policy to be different, and then we would go through policy change, um, through a more routine, um, cycle. But most of the, so, um, things that impact the lottery, the priorities, the preferences, the order is all in board policy, it would take an act of the board to modify those.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks.
Can I add something else about the focus options? I would.
Judy, come back. Um, I, I'd like to get more information about the IB middle years program. Um, the, um, and in particular, okay, I don't remember if the, i- in this iteration of the plan, there is still, um, the possibility of, um, middle graders in Vernon shifting over to Tubman?
Uh, we have not included that. Um, we did include some discussion on Vernon in the opening of the proposal to indicate some of the questions and challenges we have out there, and that was one of the ideas of, um, um, in order to allow for that consistency, um, in IB programming, um, a potential solution for Vernon down the road would be, uh, those students who wanted to take advantage of that could attend Tubman, but we wanted to open Tubman and let it settle and see what the numbers are and, you know, get it open
Right, okay.
uh, before making that somewhat unique decision.
So, I, I mean, I, I have, I have a question and a concern about that. Um, but the question is, um, I'm familiar with IB at the high school level. I'm not familiar with it at the middle grade level. Um, so I, I would like some more information about that. Um, but I'm also, uh, w- we seem to be making some decisions based on, um, that, basically it's a focus option program, or, or it's a, it's a focus program. And, I, I, I want, I, okay, I'm just gonna spit it out. Um, I, I want to know, like, is this a for-real program? And is it, um, it, how much are we spending in additional resources? And what are the kids getting out of it? What kind of outcomes are we seeing? Um, and if we're gonna be having, uh, the, the middle grade IB program drive some decisions, um, I, I want some assurance that, um, that it makes sense to do that. Um, my concern is if Vernon stays at K eight with, uh, with the option of students to shift over to Tubman at, at middle grades, but Tub, but Vernon remains at K eight, that's virtually guarant, that, that's a recipe for a real problem.
Yeah, and again, that's why
Okay.
no decisions on Vernon were introduced here because there's a lot of nuances
Right, right.
and questions and proper planning and proper listening to the Vernon community to really come to those, um, those determinations. Um, we managed to convert eight schools here, um, and wanna, I want to get to a plan for sure for Vernon, but you're, you're airing all the reasons why we didn't, um, come forward with the solution.
So I appreciate that, and don't, don't mean, I don't mean to.
Yeah, no, this is exactly, you were right in my head. Yeah.
Is the, is Tubman planned on being partly IB, mostly IB?
Um, you have to be an IB school, there's no partial
It's a whole model.
IB school. So, it's a three-year process, uh, investigation, certification, and you have to get a teacher to train. And so we are prepared to present that tomorrow as well.
I'll ask for just a couple more questions and then wrap up the agenda.
Okay. Um, Paul, questions? And Moses, you're next.
My single biggest concern, as I've said before, is Vernon. It has to be addressed, we cannot leave that as an island to just fester, um, period.
Agreed.
And I would just add to that, you know, continued conversation with the community about the K eight program there, and, you know, what would it need to be fortified? I wouldn't, because there are a lot of supporters of that within the Vernon community now, and so, um, I think we can't just assume that leaving it as a K eight is lesser than the opportunity to be part of these one school, these new schools. So, if it, if it does remain, what is that, uh, community telling the district that they need?
Agreed, and I think we need to create the space for that proper conversation and long-term planning with that community. So, thank you for that.
Moses, questions, concerns?
No, I think I'm good.
Brickbats, bouquets?
Also, in looking at, thinking, I, I know you've thought carefully through the plan, but it's, come into mind, I'm concerned about relocating any special education classrooms because those are the kids that obviously don't do the, the best with changes. Um, and, and just looking to see that we, in our thinking as well, are looking at the facilities and, um, configuring ways in which they're really kind of a, a central part of a school community, those classrooms.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Uh, we did discuss, um, a bit in the FAO Committee, uh, the configuration of classrooms potentially to serve, um, the identified special ed programs, but it sounds like there's, um, interest for an update on, um, the inclusion model work that the special ed department has been leading with that comprehensive continuum of services, um.
Yes, and again, looking at, is, is there truly a need to move some classrooms from their existing locations? Again, it's really tough for the kids.
Yeah.
So.
And, and that's mostly out of just the grade configuration change, so taking an elementary, um, level
Yeah.
classroom.
Okay.
Uh, so like, uh, what, like the one in Roseway Heights, for example, um, serving elementary students would want to be in a K five.
Yeah.
Anything else?
I just want to make one clarification, when I talked, was talking about reconstitution and I said all the teachers were fired. Um, I did correct myself, but I just want to reemphasize that that's not what happens when it's reconstituted. It's actually all, the staff are required to go to different buildings and they completely repopulate the school. So it hasn't, doesn't have anything to do with the quality of the teachers there. It's, was one of the no-child-left-behind options, so I just want to make sure that I clarified that. But that's what happened, two schools, Humboldt and Jefferson.
We're not doing anything.
No. Right. And, but I'm just saying,
No kidding.
you know, I think the, the scars are deep. Um, you know, when you had Jefferson being completely reconstituted and nobody knowing any of the systems or practices or having anybody who'd been in the building, um, one year from, to the next.
Laura, this might be, uh, putting you on the spot, but do you, um, do you have any thoughts about, um, addressing the Vestal situation? And, um, since initially floating this proposal, um, any, any directions that have emerged that you guys are following?
So the Vestal capture rate is low, it's fifty-two, fifty-three percent right now. So, it's not just about creating a bigger catchment. We have got to support that school community, wrap our arms around it, and ensure that the capture rate strengthens. We did attempt to c- create a bigger catchment area, um, and ran into a variety of barriers, typically that weekend other schools. Um, so, in looking, um, we'll certainly go back to the drawing board again and ask for some considerations around, um, other planning, other decisions, other policies that might need to be made in order to let us, um, move geographically in the direction that we probably need to move towards the south. Thank you.
So, I, I want to thank you and your fellow staffmates again for doing some incredible work with, again, a huge constraint because you are trying to do everything within a constrained boundary. And that's where we are in the process. Um, I think with Vestal, we might look at, um, very, uh, making some, uh, maybe going, moving outside of that boundary, I don't know, there, there's an elegant term that's, uh, I'm missing right now in my vocabulary, but, uh, looking at some other options, uh, to get that job done. Uh, what, was that a, uh?
Yeah, um, I just have a clarifying question because I believe those discussion around maybe, um, having like a student group come in and talk, discuss about like their educational experience. I was just wondering if we were still doing that and like, um, when we want to set up that meeting? Because my first super-sac meeting is next Tuesday, um, so hopefully I'll be able to tell, talk to those high school students to contact their feeder middle schools, um, and maybe get some students, uh, just, it's more about setting up the date and time so I can communicate that.
Great.
Great.
We'll connect.
We would love to have student voice, and Ashley's in the plan of the implementation to actually get a group of students, um, to hear your voice and hear your guidance. And I also am trying to get an appointment with a meeting time with you too, you're so busy.
Yeah, um, yeah, so, we can discuss more about that, uh,
Yes, we'd love to.
Yes.
Yes, it's in the plan.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, and, and I welcome that, and, uh, I want to point out, in Jason's testimony referencing, uh, a lot of input we got from students, uh, earlier in the process saying, a lot of K eight students saying, where's our options? K eight middle grade students, uh, but, but the more the merrier when it comes to student input. Um, two, two final things, one, it would, um, help to. One, it would help to, have we talked to the families of the kids in the self-contained classrooms at Roseway Heights? Have we heard from them?
No, we have not. And again, I wanna check and work with my colleagues in special education to figure out what kind of the regional continuum of services is and how complete that plan is and what their communication strategy would be because they have those relationships.
Okay. And second thing is, given all the testimony and, and letters we've had around the grandfathering issue and her tonight, it might be helpful to have a document that we also share with our principals that goes out to schools that, that says, if your child is here, the proposal is for the here. And, and that just might really help clarify for, a, a single document like that would really help clarify for our families.
Okay.
In all languages at the same time.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, translation should be up on Monday. Translation should be up on Monday.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, thank you. And I know that the communications office has been working on a state cylinder community plan. I think what we saw tonight was a high level of interest from all our school communities in following the discussion and knowing when there's gonna be more opportunities for the board to listen to community voice. But also, especially if, if any sort of adjustments are made, that we need to be really transparent about, about those. So, I guess I would just really request that the committee work closely with the communications team so that people have as much lead time as possible about things that looks like they really care about. So, which is great, but I wanna make sure that we don't surprise people. And I guess just along those lines, I would ask the committee and staff to start thinking about, when is the point in time in which the board is going to act and build the plan, sort of back map it from there so that there's a sense of when decisions are gonna be made? It could be that there's intermediate decisions made and then final decisions. But I think we need to start sort of mapping that out for dates and times.
One more question. In response to what somebody said earlier in the listening session about many of, some of our communities, the family's not feeling safe to come to one of our listening sessions, sessions at a school. So, I'm wondering about some outreach of having some listening sessions at some of our community partner locations.
Is that in the plan, Harry?
That would be wonderful.
I think Harry's been.
I know, I know Sipa will take any suggestions. Again, they're scheduling them consistently, so.
Yeah. I, I'd really suggest that our team work with our DBRAC co-chairs because DBRAC has historically had a pretty good plan for outreach to the community and building on that.
Yeah, I know that Sipa's very intentional in making sure that we listen to a group of parents who are usually not heard. So, we have a lot of parents here tonight, but they do not represent our parents who really do not have time to, or opportunity to come to these.
So, I'm suggesting if we partner with some of our culturally specific community partners that are kind of safe places for many of our families.
Can we build that in here?
Yeah, we're, we're thinking on the same lines. That is part of the community engagement plan. We've had a couple of those already and we've got more that we're trying to schedule.
Make sure to run it past me and let me just take a look at where we're scheduling, please.
Yep.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we're gonna move on to our public records policy. So, last week, the board policy and governance task force met and discussed a second round of reasons to the policy based on some feedback by the task force members. We also had some substantive feedback from the Society of Professional Journalists and also from some community members. So, when everybody's packed tonight, there is a revised version of the policy. We originally, this was gonna be a first reading, but because we made some substantive changes, we decided to bring it back one more time. Essentially, I could sort of walk through the, the changes, but we added a sort of, basically a no retaliation clause and also a prohibition of conflicts of interest. That was based on the community feedback. We also clarified the way that the policy was written at the very beginning. It implied that we were creating exemptions in law when in fact, we, we of course weren't creating exemptions in law. But the way it was worded implied that we, that's what we were doing. So, we've rewritten it to make that clear. There also was, the policy included language that essentially had the public records requests being processed in the order in which they were received. Well, the intent of that was to make sure that it, so there wasn't an appearance of being arbitrary of whose records requests got responded to. Apparently, some, the reporters who came and spoke to the task force said that this is a tactic that's used a lot of times to delay the release of records, that they get, they make you get in the queue and then you never get in the queue and there's hundreds of requests. So, we have removed the direction that they are processed in the order in which they're received. For example, if there's something that's relatively easy to respond to that takes a very little amount of time and could be responded to in a day or two, that might get processed before something that came in, even if it came in before, but that is a, takes longer to process. Also, the other issue that they raised, the board built into the policy an additional step that, under, under the law, if your records request is denied, you can go straight to the Mulholland County DA. And we felt for a lot of people that would be intimidating and they would decide not to do that. So, we put in a mechanism by which go the superintendent and the board. And there's a mechanism that the board doesn't disapprove, then you automatically get your records. You can still go the route to the DA, but there's this alternative route that's probably more parent and community friendly. And the journalists were concerned that it appeared that we were trying to make it harder to get to the DA and that wasn't our intent. And I think we've clarified the language to show that there's two routes. If you wanna go straight to the DA, you can, or you can go through this other route. So, that, that's the essence of the change. And I actually had two things that I just kind of raised with the board that I'd like to have addressed. And that is on number nine and number 10, the retaliation. It includes students and I don't see how students are gonna be retaliating against people who have public records requests. So, I'm not sure it's appropriate. It looks like students were added into this retaliation clause just because we copied and pasted somebody else's language. But in number nine, I would remove students. And then the other, and this is more of a question. We have, maybe for the general counsel, there is a mechanism for appealing a denial of a records request. But actually, sometimes we produce records that don't say anything at all. They're so heavily redacted. And so, my question would be, do we need to add redactions in addition to just not denying public records requests? So, you can, you could request a record and get it back and it's so redacted that you actually, while it may comply with the, it might, may comply with the law, but it doesn't comply with the spirit. And as I read our policy, you could only appeal an actual rejection of you're not gonna get the request versus I got something that was so redacted that it was meaningless. So, I'm wondering if we need to add in the, that you could appeal a redaction as well?
Usually, the redactions are medical in nature. So, it could, there would be nothing wrong with appealing the redaction as far as I'm concerned, as long as we're not giving them the, we have to comply with, with redacting medical items, personal social security numbers, et cetera.
Right. I think the general practice right now is, for example, if something had been written by the district's lawyer, the entire email is redacted versus just a surgical redaction.
Is that because it was protected originally?
Right, except for this policy, we're, we're saying that we are assuming things are public records unless there is significant legal, physical, and business harm to the district's students and staff.
There are some instances where the, generally, when the attorney's information is redacted is when they're giving somebody from the district their legal opinion and possible alternatives. That is usually redacted. And there's the attorney-client privilege, that's usually redacted. Although I believe we are doing that on a case-by-case basis. But if there's actually legal advice being given, that's usually redacted.
In which case, you'd be able to, even though somebody appealed, you could make the case that it would lead to legal, physical, or business harm to the district? I guess what I'm concerned about is just something that doesn't, you get a completely non-responsive response because everything's been redacted and you don't, you don't know whether it's legal advice or something else and you can't appeal it.
We could certainly, maybe the better road is to go and give, if you're going to have a document like that, we actually give the reason as to why it was redacted. Was it legal advice? Was it a medical item? Yes.
So, I'm gonna ask if we can have some language added in there because that seems like potentially a just significant loophole potentially in our policy.
We can certainly do that, yes.
So, in, in terms of the appeals, they're concerned that at one level, somebody might overly redact. And so, an appeal, we get a second set of eyes on it to confirm that somebody didn't go overboard in order to protect, oh, overprotect?
Right.
Okay. Yeah, I, I think I'd support something like that.
Okay. Does anybody have any objection?
I don't have a, I would support.
Okay. Any other questions? Because otherwise, we're gonna take this out of a red line version. We'll make the two changes around on number nine, taking out the students. We'll add some, something related, some language related to the redaction.
Yeah, I was trying to, is there's. When would a student be involved here? And so, I was letting my imagination go wild. If there was something to do with a student harassing another student or a staff person and there was something around a public records request on that and blah, 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 would that be a possibility of some retaliation around something like that? I mean, that's, that's the only thing I could wrap my head around where, where this might come into play. But it's.
If I may, the, the one thing I would say on retaliation, and I haven't seen the, the final language that made it in there, but there is a technical item with the way an appeal is made from the DA. And technically, you have to sue the individual to appeal it. So, that should be something that, if it's not clear, that should be made clear if you're going to appeal the DA's decision. We have one right now where the law is not clear. So, we need clarity from the court as to what was meant by it because either way, whichever, if we give it, we're going to get sued. If we don't give it, we're gonna get sued. So, an appealing of DA's decision should not be retaliation.
Somebody was like, you were like nodding your head vigorously around something and I don't know if that's.
I'm trying to express, like, how could a student get retaliated against? If a parent or a student files a request for information and then about, say, a principal in a building, that student could easily get retaliated against and that would be pretty damaging.
Oh, absolutely. This, this is actually the student.
We can leave it in, that's easy.
The student doing the retaliating. The, the language here is the student doing the retaliation, not being retaliated against, and that's.
I guess if, if these things are, if these policies are supposed to sort of live for the ages, I think it's theoretically possible that a student could retaliate against somebody. So, is, is there any problem, is, is there any problem in leaving it in?
I would change the language because it says up to and including dismissal. You'd probably wanna add in a phrase that's appropriate for students at that point.
Okay, we'll leave that in. We'll add something around the redaction. And we'll have something other than dismissal that's appropriate for students. Okay, so the next time we're gonna see this is first reading.
Thank you for all the work that went into that. That was, it was great. And I'm, the staff were very responsive and very fast and, and the quality of the work was great. So, thank you, everybody.
I'll echo that. So, we are at the public comment, back to the public comment period. Ms. Powell, do we, do we have public comment? And I'll read the.
We do.
Okay, be, before we read the names, I'm just going to discuss our, the guidelines for community comment. The board thanks the community for taking the time to attend this meeting and staying so late and provide your comments to the board. We value public input as it informs our work and we look forward to hearing your thoughts, concerns, and reflections. Our responsibility is a board to actively listen with our electronic devices turned off. Board members will not respond to comments or questions during public comment, but our board manager, Roseanne Powell, will follow up on the issues raised during public testimony. Guidelines for public input emphasize respect and consideration of others. Complaints about individual employees should be directed to the superintendent's office as a personnel matter. You have a total of three minutes to share your comments. Please begin by stating your name and spelling your name for the record. During the first two minutes of your testimony, a green light will appear. When you have one minute remaining, a yellow light will go on and when time's up, a red light will go on. And when the buzzer sounds, we respectfully ask that you conclude your comments. So, with that, Ms. Powell?
We have Mia Pisano and Josh DeChristi.
I have some materials for the board. Can I just bring those up?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Okay, hello. My name is Mia, M.I.A., Pisano, P.I.S.A.N.O. And I thank you all for being here and for your stamina. You're kind of amazing. I'm here again to bring back to this new board the issue of Franklin High School's use of the name Quakers, which we all know is the name of a religion, as the school nickname and team name. I represent a group that includes Franklin High School parents, students, alumni, PTSA members, and also community members, which includes Quakers like myself. Over the five years so far that we've been requesting the district to take. the five years so far that we've been requesting the district to take action on this issue, an extensive file of documentation has accumulated and is in the possession of one of the district's senior directors, it's, I think it's a little bit of a hot potato, and has jumped around, but Leslie Odell is, I think, who had it most recently. This file is really thorough, it can tell you everything that has been submitted and documented about this issue so far, and so I will not recapitulate its contents. I gave each of you a document that outlines the policies and administrative directives that are relevant in this situation. The first section shows the board having ultimate authority over names, and also shows the specific exclusion of religious names. The second section defines the various aspects of what constitutes a school, over the naming of which the board has authority. The third section is an administrative directive on religious symbols in schools. The second page details the uses of the name Quaker at Franklin that fall clearly within these definitions, and finally, there's a summary of some of the contents of the file that the district already has, and I can easily provide copies of any of this information that are in my possession. So, to get to the heart of the matter, people who are fans of the Quaker nickname say that at Franklin High School, Quaker doesn't mean Quaker, and so it isn't religious, because Quakers doesn't mean Quakers, it means football, or it means a clock tower, or oatmeal, or earthquakes, or a historical figure who wasn't a Quaker but who lived in Philadelphia, Benjamin Franklin. The argument is that when they say Quaker, they don't mean Quaker, and so it doesn't mean Quaker, and so therefore it's not religious. Really? We can do that. We can appropriate the name of a religion to use it for football at a public school. Could we call the team the Jews or the Mormons? So, if that is the justification for the use of a religious name for the sports team for our public high school, then we need the board to show us legal judgment, authorizing the district to appropriate the name of the religion, and to show us legal judgment that these policies I've listed here and directives do not apply in this situation, or alternatively, the board can immediately initiate the process of changing Franklin High School's team name to something that is appropriate for a public school. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Josh DeCristo. I'm a parent of a third grader at Alameda and a sixth grader just started at Beaumont. I was here earlier for the listening session on the middle school openings. I didn't have a chance to speak to you then, so I'd like to have the chance to do that now and express my concern, because I live in a small pocket north of Alameda School that has been suggested for boundary change, and the problem that I see there was raised earlier by another gentleman, which is that it would take kids from this small section and require them to go to schools quite far away. Right now, we live just over half a mile from Beaumont. My son walks to school, bikes to school, skates to school, and we live about eight blocks, less than eight blocks from Alameda. This proposed change would have my daughter, when she starts middle school, going a ninety-five-minute walk or something along those lines, crossing busy streets, including Fremont, MLK, Knott, Seventh, Williams, Vancouver, to get to Tubman. What really, I guess, bothers me about the way that this has unfolded is that I don't see a reason for it. The reasons that were stated in the proposed boundary change were to reduce the size of certain classes at Alameda, and to increase other K-5 feeder schools for Tubman, which is the one that I'm concerned about, and Roseway. The problem is that when you look at the numbers, it's thirty-three total students from our sect, from our small area, and of that, there's no indication of what the distribution would be across grades, presumably if it's evenly distributed. You're talking about five or six students per class, meaning you'd increase Tubman by about fifteen students. The board's policies on boundary changes seem to have been completely ignored here. I'd like to read a couple of them to you. The policies are to allow as many students as possible to continue together from one school level to another, to promote safer routes to school by limiting the number of natural and human-made physical boundaries students must cross to and from school, considering availability of sidewalks and bicycle lanes, to promote a sense of community by keeping neighborhoods together, to minimize transportation times and distances, to minimize the assignment of students away from schools in close proximity to their residence, to affect the smallest number of students as possible, and to avoid separating small numbers of students from their classmates when they move to a new school level. Every single one of those policies is violated by taking this very small section just north of Alameda and reassigning it to an entirely different elementary school, and even more importantly, to a different middle school. And what is the reason for that? If it's really as indicated, excuse me, to promote smaller school at Alameda, that should be handled completely differently, and if it's to increase size of other schools, there's a lot more effective ways to do that without carving this small section off.
Can you wrap, just conclude your last thought? Thank you.
That's it. So, I would like the board to consider that small section. I know it's a small issue in the scope of what you're doing, but it's important to us. Thank you.
We have Melissa Franz and Greg Burrell.
So while they're coming up, I'm gonna ask, Jim, I'm, Jim, I'm gonna ask that the question about the Quakers and using a religion as a mascot, that we do some legal spade work about that, and the justification, not just our policies, but just overall our, our practice.
We have already done that, I'll forward that to the board.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Melissa Franz, that's F.R.A.N.T.Z. I think as a district, just to start, we need to do some outreach and some work with our families about the word equity, racial, and our board racial education equity policy, and what that looks like, and how it's different from the word equality, and different from the word fair, and why, as a board, as a district, we adopted that policy. I think there was a lot of discussion many years ago, and we sort of lost momentum on, like, what those words actually mean. I think it would help some of this public discourse around boundary change quite a bit if our families were all clear on definitions of those words and why we have them. I wanna talk about my personal experience with PPS's struggle to hire and support teachers of color. I trust you've all read studies, national studies around improved outcomes for kids of color and white kids when they have brown, black and brown teachers in the classroom and are represented, but academically and emotional outcomes are improved, and I just wanna talk about what that looks like in my house. I have six kids in Portland Public Schools. I have three at an elementary school and three at a middle school. Four of my children are black, two of my children are white. It shouldn't feel like they won the lottery if they walk into a classroom with a teacher of color, and right now it does. This is most startling and frustrating when you walk into my kids' middle school, where nearly, almost half of the kids are kids of color, and the staff is startlingly white. My children have all had and continue to receive excellent instruction, but they are being taught quietly that the expert in the room is almost always white. As a system, as a district in this system, we are doubling down on their implicit bias, both for my black kids and their white kids. We are also teaching them that folks that look most like them are their beloved custodians who clean up in their buildings after them, and care for their social, emotional health as counselors, school climate coordinators, and through our community partners like SEI and our son's school. I know our HR department is facing some significant challenges right now, and rebuilding our staff, and rebuilding their staff, and I also know we've done targeted recruitment for teachers of color through Portland Teachers Program, and out-of-state recruitment, which my kids have benefited from those programs and continue to benefit from those programs, but I've seen the soul-crushing lack of support for black and brown teachers in our buildings through micro and macro aggressions of being the only teachers of color in their, in their buildings, from their colleagues, from our communities, from parents that look like me, probably from me. So, as a board, I'm hoping you can look at ways to urgently increase representation in the classroom and support them with clear support and mandates once they get there. Our systems, our school systems were built and designed to center white supremacy, and I'm so grateful that as a district and a board, you have a policy to interrupt that, but we can't wish, or hope, or believe that that will magically happen unless we have a really good plan in place. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Greg Burrell, B-U-R-R-I-L-L, and good evening, board directors, teachers, parents, administrators, and everybody watching at home. I came here to remind you that raising and educating the next generation of human beings is the most important job in the world, so I wanna thank, begin by thanking all the people that do that. Every parent, administrator, bus driver, custodian, secretary, speech pathologist, counselor, the list of educators is much longer than teacher, and I want you all to know that I support all of you. This evening, you heard PAT President Suzanne Cohen share stories of unconscionable overwork and lack of support for our students. Now, I don't have this problem, but that's because I earn less than half of what classroom teachers do, because I've decided to become a substitute. In order to love, in order to be able to love my job, I avoided the workload of a full-time high school French teacher, prepare five separate sets of lessons, fourth and fifth year French, taught in a single classroom, because I chose not to pretend that it's an adequate job to try and figure out how to spend thirty hours a week giving each child ten minutes of assessment for reading, writing, speaking, and understanding French, teaching twenty-six hours, and preparing fascinating, exciting lessons for my students. So, I don't do any of that stuff. And one of the things that I do is I'm trying to make a job that I would be willing to do, so that's why I was here earlier with my union brothers and sisters, supporting lower class sizes, reduced workload for teachers, common planning time, et cetera. So, I also wanna tell you that I'm not here to complain about the way PPS has bargained with teachers while giving central office employees yet another set of raises. I'm here to offer forgiveness for the past and hope for the future. I am hopeful that our new superintendent will have the vision and the leadership to streamline our central office and put more dollars now spent on layers of administrators into our classrooms. I would like to see administrator positions eliminated and replaced with administrative assistants, whose job would be to finalize and disseminate the results of cooperative planning of teachers. And just while I have a few seconds left, I wanna mention about educators of color. I have talked to far too many educators of color who were recruited from around the country and then got here and found themselves faced with the sort of microaggressions that Ms. Franz mentioned, so thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
And we have Steve Buell and Juan Carlos Blacker.
My name's Steve Buell, B-U-E-L, and I have two off-the-cuff comments before I get into what I wanted to say. First, nice job on the public records, Julia, that was very good, and that's finally getting taken care of. And the second was, we should have probably thought along this D-BRAC stuff about doing K-sixes with seven, eight middle schools, might have solved some problems that we never really have solved, but no one wanted to do that, so here we go. I went to the Nebraska football game, Oregon-Nebraska football game, and there were fifteen thousand people in the stands from Nebraska, all wearing red. They were engaged, and that showed me a lot, the power of engagement, which is a key issue missing in our looking at middle schools and PPS. There are five things we may be overlooking that we need to think about in order to actually make quality middle schools. First is engaging activities in electives, sports, music, art, hands-on classes, technology, maker spaces. Note that Jackson has woodshop and a fabulous art program. I assume we're gonna put a woodshop and a fabulous art program in our other middle schools since we're gonna equalize this stuff. There's lots of talk about ninth grade counts, had an article in the newspaper a couple days ago, but really that is just because you can measure it with a simple measure. Are kids on track to graduate? Actually, seventh and eighth grades are just as important. Dropouts are affected by two huge influences in school. Can they read, and are they engaged? These are the first two things we should make sure exist in our schools. Look at the incredible correlation with activities and sports to graduation rates, and participation in these starts in middle school, in some cases even in grade school. This engagement doesn't get to every student, but it gets to enough so we can actually spend the time necessary with those kids who are struggling in their own lives. It lessens the numbers to a manageable size. Second important idea is an outstanding principal who can relate to middle school students and teachers. It can't be someone who follows all the standard approaches. That doesn't work in middle school. I'm not sure we have people who will be hiring who understand the importance of this. Hopefully, the board would understand the importance of that. Third, we need to hire rock star teachers, and the principal needs to understand this. Because we need teachers who can make school fun and interesting, without this, we lose kid after kid in the middle school. Four, we need to take care of students' needs. For instance, ESL, the older kids who can't speak English. We don't do this now. Special ed, we need to make sure the support is there. TAG, we need to have challenging classes, and plenty of people to support children whose home situation creates a need for serious support. And fifth, we need the resources in order to do these things. My reading of our plan for Tubman particularly is that these five critical factors may all be missing. It is the board's and the new superintendent's job to make sure this is not the case. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Juan Carlos Blacker, that's J-U-A-N-C-A-R-L-O-S-B-L-A-C-K-E-R. I'm a parent of a seventh grade student at Beaumont. We live in the East Side catchment that's being moved to, for the Alameda-Beaumont, and grant students are being moved to Madison and Rose City Park. I just want to ask you to not only consider the grandfathering that you talked about for the West Side boundary changes, but also for the East Side boundary changes. Particularly, I'd like that Madison will be going under construction in two years after grant ends. That's going to affect students dramatically, by my daughter, for instance, who will be starting the year that grant reopens. Now she will be going to Madison and actually going to Marshall because of that. So, something to consider just the grandfathering of all those students who have been going to Alameda and Beaumont with that track that had to grant, and I've been planning that for the years they've been doing that, to also consider giving the students and the parents the, the choice to, to decide which school they, they go to. Some may wanna choose Madison, some may wanna choose Grant, but I wanted to add that to the discussion you're planning on having, so that's all.
Talk to me afterwards.
Okay, absolutely, and we're a very small group, I think there's only three students affected total, so I wanna be the voice for those, those students. Thank you very much. And I appreciate the work you guys did, this is a lot of work, so, thank you.
Namaste.
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 So, board committee and conference reports, and I think the only person I heard from who had a report was the chair of the Finance Audit and Operations Committee, Director Moore.
Yeah, this will be brief. So, the Finance Audit and Operations Committee met just before the public comment earlier today. We talked about-
the public comment earlier today. We talked about essentially two, two major topics. First was middle school, and we got an update on the budget that's going to be necessary to deliver the two new middle schools and make all the changes to the, to the remaining K-5s. We got a line, line item budget, which was much appreciated. We'll be hearing more about that in coming meetings. The other thing we heard about around middle schools was staffing, and we got an introduction to some of the work that's been going on to come up with alternative models to, to staff schools with the specific intention of dealing with the staffing problems that come from under enrollment. So, again, we're going to be hearing more about this. The next FAO meeting is the 26th, and most of that meeting is in fact going to be devoted to going a lot deeper into the staffing models. So, if you're interested, that might be a good, a good meeting to go to, because it's going to have direct impacts on what happens around the middle school implementation. The, the last topic we dealt with was a resolution on the sequencing of the bond work, and we'll, we unanimously passed a recommendation to bring a resolution to the full board at the next board meeting on the 26th that lays out the sequence for the, the major remodeling and rebuild work under the 2017 bond. So, stay tuned.
Thank you. So, the board will now consider its business agenda. Ms. Powell, I just want to clarify that we no longer have on the business agenda 5506, 5507, and 5508? Yes, those were not, those are not posted. Okay. And then, I'm also going to remove item 5010 from the business agenda. There's an interest that's been expressed that, by board members, of having a discussion about this large direct negotiation contract, and I've had a discussion briefly at the beginning of the board meeting with the general counsel that, about this discussion, so that will happen going forward, so that'll be.
And so where would that discussion take place?
The full board. And ultimately, any sort of contract, obviously, we'd come back to the full board as well. So, with that, we still have some remaining items on the business agenda. Do I have a motion and a second to adopt the remaining items on the business agenda?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Director Anthony and a second from Director Moore. Ms. Powell, is there any public comment on the business agenda? There is not. Okay. Is there any board discussion on the items, remaining items on the business agenda? Okay, the board will now vote on the business agenda. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Any abstentions? The business agenda is approved by a vote of six to zero, with student representative Moses Tran voting.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you to the board members, that was a lengthy meeting, and we still have any, just a reminder, we still have an executive session before we leave. So, with that, I'm going to adjourn, and we will go into executive session to hear issues related to bargaining.